Good evening, this is the Halifax Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. And please begin, oh. This meeting is being recorded for cable podcast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. And we will begin the meeting by the Pledge of Allegiance, so stay standing gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect timing.
I need to shut my phone.
Oh yeah.
The constabulary is on here.
So Charlie is unable to be here today, so I'm gonna be kinda playing the role of Charlie as well. So, Tom, would you like to begin? Does any, actually before that, does everybody have any changes to the agenda?
No, none that I am aware of.
Okay, Tom, would you like to begin?
Do you wanna do the regular session minutes for June 4th?
Yeah, so if, I would like to move the regular sessions for June 12th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Alright. Madam Chair, I move to affirm approval of the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 25 for $376,152.56. Vendor warrant number 26 for $777,594.64. Withholding warrant number 27 for $140,430.30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the following warrant. Vendor warrant number 28 for $137,642.35.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve payment of the selectmen bills dated September 25th, 2018, as soon as I find them again. Matthew Bender and Company Law Books for $535.61. National Grid for the monthly electric bill at the town hall, $1,361.31. National Grid concession stand, $73.37.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna, our first appointment is at 7:45. So we'll just go through the mail. This is just a note that Chief of Arrows will be out of the country from August, October 9th through the 21st, and that Captain Kuzo will be in charge during his absence. We have department signatures, one for the water department and one for the board assessors.
I need to give a couple more that were added also.
So we also have the Council on Aging. Council on Aging, Board of Health, Water Department, and Assessors. So I need a motion that we sign up on the signing signature.
So moved.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I know, jumped in the gun. Hang on. Just sign those, I'll sign them afterwards. We're gonna talk a little bit about foreclosures that the treasure collector is now in the process of doing. There's several properties in the town of Halifax, and it will take some time and some funds, especially with individuals filing for bankruptcy and homes that have residence tenants but not doing anything to pay the taxes. So, I had a conversation with Pam Adusi to let her know that, how the foreclosure process works and about what happens when people file bankruptcy and how we can put off the sales. And she's got just a couple that are in process, but she's really on it, but she just wants to have a sense that, you know, we support her in the collection of these outstanding taxes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna wait, just because we don't have a lot of time to talk about the fire chief hiring process, we'll do that after the dog hearing, 'cause I don't wanna, 'cause it'll take some time. The school building project, there was review session on Wednesday, September 19th, and progress was made on related issues, especially those related to the doors. And the next session will be Thursday, September 27th at 4:15. Tom, did you get pictures of the, did you, I think Charlie had sent out, I think you needed specifically to look at it, the, the report from this week and the hardware and the doors?
Yeah, I, I looked at everything I had to date. I was waiting, I believe we're meeting tomorrow at 4:15?
Uh, no, we're meeting Thursday.
Thursday at 4:15. I was gonna wait to go over that with them. The weather has been inclement, so I haven't been able to really see anybody over there to talk to.
Okay, alright, awesome. There we go. This is badge quest stuff, so hang on. Okay, look at that. This is the report. Okay. United Elevator. So Scott Materna went out for a bid for the service contract of our elevator and asked to switch vendors, and he chose United Elevator and slept in Garrett and signed on behalf of the board. I had to recuse myself because my husband is in the elevator business. So we just need to confirm, affirm this contract that Tom, I mean that Troy signed.
Want me to move it?
Yes, please.
Alright, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Stormwater management, based on the town accountant's approval and the changes from town council and agreement with VHB plus the board's previous authorization, I, he signed the amend, uh, Charlie signed the amended agreement. Steve Haywood, Kathy Dryan, and Charlie will be meeting with VHB during the second half of October. So that's all set. And we have a Talent Inc. form which will be interviewing Claudia at 8:15. And we have the bridge report from the Highway Surveyor for Thompson Street Bog Overflow. It's in the, the, um, there's some minor deficiencies, but nothing that really stands out. And he sent a copy to the Highway Surveyor. Okay. There are two copies that need to be signed for the rehabbing of Engine 1. This is a project that was approved at town meeting and through the Capital Planning and Finance Committees. And there are two copies that should be sent to Jason as soon as we sign them for Bulldog. Let me see who signs them.
Fire Department.
The entire Board of Selectmen will sign the contract, so I'll need a motion for us to sign this contract.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let me just sign it before we move on. I think there's just two, two copies. Can you just verify that, Pam?
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Thank you. The ADA grant, in order to comply for the ADA planning grant with the state, I need to sign this notice, the nondiscrimination notice. So I need a motion that allows me to sign the coordination designation form, the nondiscrimination notice, and the ADA grievance procedure.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Mr. Cordy.
Didn't know my walk.
I do know your walk.
It's a shuffle.
Yeah, it's a shuffle.
It's a reach-up. Okay. Pam, I know I always date everything, but if you don't mind doing that, just so we can make it quick. Okay, we have two cemetery deeds to sign.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The National Grid's rates will increase on November 1st from .10870 to 0.13718 per KWH. This follows the usual pattern of winter pricing being higher than summer pricing. So, but the aggregate continues to be .10876.
The aggregation program being the program for town side, aren't you?
Yes. Yes. I think this is best. I think that's it.
Recycling abatements, yeah?
Yeah, we could do those. Pam, do you have a call? Okay, so I have to change hats.
Are these abatements that came in late, or?
No.
Well, there's two that came in beforehand, they were just waiting.
Okay.
And then there's the five, six, they came in after the deadline.
Okay, if they come in after the deadline, then I don't feel the need.
I don't usually think we need to do the abatement.
There's a pile there.
I don't have it.
Let me, correct me if I'm wrong, the notice, the notice that was sent out for payment was also on the notice when they had to have the abatement form in.
Yeah, did.
Yeah, we've had several meetings on that.
I don't think that we changed that stance, because we kept moving it last time and it caused us more problems.
Right.
But this year, because we did such a huge undertaking of notifying everybody in so many different ways that this is the deadline, so I think that the only ones that we can look at are the ones that within the date.
Okay, and ones were, yes. So did, I think this, I need to go into bill number, these, these two little ones that were on.
Timing.
And you verified that all the documents are there that's needed?
Yeah.
So I moved that we sign off on the abatement for number 14?
Nope. Bill number?
14. And?
Yeah, bill number 412. And 2613.
What'd you say?
Um, there was one other thing in the folder, and, and it's, we, we had a request for somebody to, to apply to be a special police officer. I talked to the police chief about that and. All those in favor?
Who's first and second?
On Troy, moved it, and Tom second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I talked to the chief about it, he'd rather hold off until the new chief comes in. He didn't feel that it would be fair for him to make a decision about the department so soon, so close to his retirement.
Fair enough.
Okay. So that's all we have, and then at 8:45, we have.
7:45.
Um, 7:45. Pam, I don't have in Charlie's notes that with Davis, that they're up to date, they're up to date on their payment plan?
Go behind your pink sweater.
'Cause I was dealing with this.
Yeah, I, I checked the clerk's office, last payment was on the 20th of February. So what Charlie said was, if we didn't, you know, get a payment, then just schedule a revocation here, but you know, once we get the letter, she usually pretty much will come in with the payment.
Okay.
Okay, do you know, so, so that we can do, schedule a revocation here for the 25th?
I mean, I'm sorry, that would be the.
October 23rd.
October 23rd, yes. At 7:55.
7:55.
Okay.
And then I guess it's Charlie will send out a note next week, and then she'll come in.
Okay, so do I have a motion to continue the hearing, because it's 7:44?
We're gonna set up a revocation.
So moved.
Yes, okay, we'll set up a revocation here for October 23rd at 7:55. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have some road cuts, right Pam?
Yes. And that's in behind your blue.
21 10th Avenue or 23, 23 Anawan Drive.
Okay, so we have a three-by-five cut trench at 23 Anawan Drive to abandon service to the main. And we have, the trench permit is okay by the building inspector, the, we would require one police detail, the highway was fine with it, and water was fine with it. And when the, we need to state the contingent on approval from Contamination, which now we're all set. Okay, so we're ready for a motion for the road cut on 23 Anawan Drive.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next road cut is at 21 10th Ave., and it's for a four-by-six road cut tie and a four-by-30 road cut trench, and it's to install a new gas service. This has been approved by the water department, the highway department, the police department requires one detail, and the building inspector requires a trench permit, I mean, which has been, and then Contamination has signed up on it as well. So I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have the one other thing, which is the, um, we received notification that a earth removal permit was due to be renewed, and we did not hear from the individual who required it. They have asked the board to review it. And at this point, we need to talk about whether or not, because they didn't follow the proper time procedure, whether or not we should have them stop any use or any.
Activity?
Yeah, activity. It's from White Dog Cranberry, and their permit is to remove 84,000 cubic yards of topsoil and sand.
How long has they had that permit?
They had it for a year, and the first year he was gonna do it standard, so he's gonna remove 20,000 this year, 20,000 next year, he's removed 18,000 so far.
Does the permit expire?
Right. So, he can ask him to not do anything until he comes in here, change his permit.
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, that's appropriate.
Just, you know, it'll be a couple weeks, so he'll just have to stop, okay.
I think that's appropriate, so do I have a motion to do that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, so that, we have one other thing besides the dog hearing that we actually have to stay on schedule for, and we have a one-day liquor license for Our Lady of the Lake, and I'm gonna ask that we take that out of order just because we do have Mr. Cordy and Mrs. Honeywell here to talk about it, is that okay?
That's fine.
Do you wanna come up to the front? So this is a, a one-day liquor license that we've, we have approved.
In the past.
In the past, for the Oktoberfest for Our Lady of the Lake. And typically, we have Mr. Cordy, who is sober and in charge.
At this moment.
18 years now, so I plan on staying the same way.
It's a wonderful thing.
If you ask me that 18 years ago, I'd say I was a drunk. I'm not ashamed to admit it, but I courted it.
You were a connoisseur of fine liquor.
He was one of my favorite people, Mr. Cordy. Mr. Cordy's one of my favorites.
We have a licensed bartender that comes into town and serves for us. It's bartender, coffee, they're out of Millboro, I've seen them many, many times. They're a fantastic group, tip approved, booze approved, we're selling nothing but beer. And they'll be taking care of that, well, we could have water and stuff like that for me and others.
How long, how long a day is it?
How long will it be here?
11:30. 11:30 to 3 PM. And there'll be approximately 200 adults, and again, Mr. Cordy stated, it's just for a one-day beer and wine. For Oktoberfest, and there'll be a bartender service.
That we do at the church.
Yeah, it's a yearly thing.
Yep. Yep.
Anybody who often come to it, it's not just the church event, we do have anybody that wants to come. Knott's, Spratt's, South Club, fried dough, complete around the food, there's plenty there.
Is the tip certification usually presented to the Board of Health? Is that, is that?
Uh, goes to the, to.
The board's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's it, okay.
And I, I have those.
Oh, that's okay, yeah, you can either send them, send them to me, whatever you wanna do.
Okay, I'll give them to you.
Great, yeah, wonderful.
And we have the police department signing off on it, we have the fire department signing off on it. So we are all set, so I will entertain a motion for the one-day liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I wish I knew what I was in German.
I don't invite, I don't invite, so I don't know.
Oh, it is, huh? I don't know.
It's, yeah.
Yeah. Everything I know is from Hogan's Heroes. Remember that show? One of my favorites. Nice to see you, Mr. Cordy and Mrs. Honeywell.
I'll see you later.
I'll see you later, elegant.
They're gonna sign that, I'll call, I'll call you if you can die again.
Come and get it.
Take care, shower.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, thanks.
Okay, so, geez. Do you wanna, do you wanna practice our Christmas carols or something?
Okay, so we have this list.
We're so efficient.
This is signed, this is the one that we approved.
Yeah, Kimmy's slacking, probably trying to be Charlie, you're not saying.
No, no, I was trying to be Charlie, it's really hard to be Charlie.
The number will relate, so we need to just sell the bill numbers, you can.
Oh, yeah, 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 alright, let's do those. Here, do you wanna pass them to me and I'll?
Just right now, Tom's passing them, babe.
Okay. So these are the two. Okay. So. I, I'll make a motion, just 'cause I have it in front of me. I will make a motion that we deny the request for abatements for bill number 939, bill number 2515, bill number 53, bill number 969, bill number 2618, bill number 378, and bill number 2132.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unfortunately, we can't start the dog hearing until.
And the, here, the ones that, you guys can do this.
Alright, so we'll just sign this while we wait. Okay. I'm gonna put this back in the folder for you?
Well, why don't we take it, just check off knock grant.
Short rate.
Um, yeah, you know what, I can do that.
Well, in case you change it.
I would never, do you know, I am honest.
Oh, here, I'm gonna put this back in the folder too.
Yeah, I do, I know that.
I'm gonna put this back in the folder.
Okay, great, thanks.
I'm sorry. Alright, I'll just take a moment to, we have to, like, wait for the actual eight o'clock in case people wanna participate.
You're gonna send a letter or a complaint or?
We don't, we could do, actually Claudia's here early. Yeah, if you don't mind, Claudia's here early. Hi Claudia. Good, since you're early, would you mind coming up front and us doing it now? We have to wait until eight o'clock to do a dog hearing by, and we've gotten through all of our, well, we have one other item that's gonna take a while, so we thought we would start. So, thank you for coming in. So Claudia met with the Wage and Personnel Board two weeks ago. And sort of watched a meeting, but it wasn't a normal meeting, because we're in this process, right? So, um, I don't want you to feel that every meeting will be that. So, since nobody really. So why don't you just tell the rest of the board a little bit about yourself and why you were interested in joining the Wage and Personnel Board?
So, um, my name's Claudia Noble Cotton, I've lived in Halifax for roughly about 15 years. I have two teenagers that go to the Silver Lake Regional High School. My interest is twofold, my children are getting older, so I have time to offer my services. And I do know Sue Vogt, who is the secretary on the board, and she let me know of the need for some volunteers on that board, so she knows that I work for JP Morgan in Boston, and I have some experience with hiring individuals and writing job descriptions, so she thought it would be a good fit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did try to talk her into finance, 'cause we have so many openings on finance, but she.
Don't scare her away.
I'm so grateful, I'm so grateful.
Maybe in the future.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
Well, this, this will be demanding enough for the short term during the reevaluations.
Yes.
Well, when you think about it, they both go hand in hand, if you haven't got the finance, you can do the hiring.
Yeah, I think, I.
I'm sorry, I think we need the vote of the town moderator.
Uh, we don't need the town moderator, as long as we have, no, because we didn't always have the town.
Did he know that, that he was still trying to come, he was gonna get a ride here?
Oh.
Yeah, he had something.
Nice going, Kim.
He had.
Well, we can, we can, um.
We can vote it in a turn a minute later.
He had a meeting to get away, and then he was gonna get a ride here after that. And I think Charlie had put that email to him, but do you have his email?
I do not have that email.
No, no, do you have, do you have his email address?
No, I do not have his email. I do not. It's okay, we're gonna chat a little bit more, and so he can come in, 'cause the appointment was, was at eight o'clock, so we're not.
Yeah, if you would email him now, we probably wouldn't get it.
Yeah, right, I'm at 8:15.
We're too efficient.
Yeah, I, yeah, we're just, yeah, this boogie.
No, we are, no, we're, we're, we're too efficient, because we, we had some time, and I, I, 'cause typically, it's, it's nice that the moderator is gonna be participating, but it's not necessar, it's not, um. We have, we've appointed people without the moderator in the past, so, um, but if he's on his way, then I would feel terrible.
That was the last email that I had got last week, that Charlie had sent, that he was hitting for, he would be here, so I hate.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we should go.
Well, in the meantime, yeah, so we can just talk about Wage and Personnel. So, as you know, we, by statute, when we do not have members of the public on Wage and Personnel, a member from the Finance Committee and a member from the Board of Selectmen are appointed to that board. And so, um, it's been a struggle to find members, just because, as I said to you during that meeting, it's hard for people to have the time to dedicate to the work. And certainly, this undertaking of reevaluing every position in town is a lot of work, but it's a way to really learn about each position and what they do, and I think it's a, it's, it's great to see how the puzzle all fits together, you know, and how one position may affect another one and all those kinds of things. So I would love, um, and again, it's, it's a lot of time in the beginning, but I would love if you, I don't know what your time constraints are in the beginning, whether or not you would have the time to actually learn the system and go over some of the actual ratings. Is that something that you're interested in, or?
Sure, it just depends on the, the timing, I do have a full-time job, so, um, it just depends on.
Well, darn it all, what's more important, a full-time job or a board?
I think you know the answer.
Yeah, I know. Because what happens is, by, it used to be in the bylaw, and I, I think it's a good idea to put it back in the bylaw, to be honest, that in the bylaw, we had, every three years by statute, we had to reevaluate every position so that we didn't get so far down the road without looking at it, right? So now, we're sort of forced to kind of look at everything all at once, but if we were doing it on an ongoing basis, then we wouldn't have this overwhelming task, you know? And, you know, I, I, we were very lucky this summer that we had an intern, and what we were doing is, she was doing it independent of me doing it, so that we could double-check it. And that's like the ideal situation of the Wage and Personnel Board. So the ideal situation would be, all three members would be evaluating every position every three years independently, and then going together and just sort of debating it. And then looking at the pay structure, so that we know that we remain competitive. Obviously, this board is the board that's responsible for negotiating contracts with all union employees, so we tend to do the same thing, we look at job descriptions, we, um, we are constantly going out and looking at medium salaries and making sure that we don't always get to where we need to be for average salary, but we certainly make the attempt on this part. At the end of the day, for all of the salaries, town meeting has to finance it. So, um, but our job is to, on Wage and Personnel is, is not so much to look at the budget. So, um, it's to look at the salaries and what a fair rate is. And if people want to affect the spending of the town or affect their own tax bill or the tax pay bill of other in the community, the Finance Committee is really the, the committee that drives that. So Wage and Personnel, their main objective is to come up with a fair wage and to make sure that the bylaws are correct in place, and then it's up to the Finance Committee to let us know whether or not we could afford it. And again, at the, at the end of the day, it's the, um.
Town meeting voted, but it's up to the board.
If you could enter through the, the other door, thank you.
It's, it's up to the Wage and Personnel to present a justification for any increase in the comparison rates to whether there be other towns or what the nice rate is.
Yeah. But anyway, alright, so we're gonna pause this. And you get to watch a dog hearing.
Or here, whichever one you're addressing.
Would you, yeah.
Can I just stay here or do I?
Yeah, that's fine, it's fine, yeah. So it is, um, eight o'clock, and we are here for a dog. So, it is, um, eight o'clock, and we are here for a dog hearing. And anybody that is here that is planning on testifying, um, during this process will need to stand at this time. Thank you. And you're gonna... So, everybody's gonna have to give the name and address to PM, and then we're gonna do a little bit of a swearing.
Okay, so, which one am I there?
Brian, Brian. Tyler Nordgren.
Tyler, what, I'm sorry?
Nordgren.
Can you add this, please?
Twenty-one White Island Road.
Ray Nordgren.
Twenty-one.
That's correct.
Okay.
Donna Kerbel, K E R B L E. K U... K E R B L E.
Okay, twenty-one.
Um, I would wait for...
Jane Robinson. Nineteen White Island Road.
Peter Ward. Nineteen White Island Road.
I'm Michelle Wood. I live at thirty-two, White Island Road.
Kate O'Donnell here.
Thirty-seven White Island Road.
Okay, so, if you guys, if you raise your right hand, do you swear the whole truth during these proceedings before?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Everybody can be seated. Thank you for being here. So, we are here because Venus attacked, um, we have a dog that, um, unfortunately, um, killed a five-month-old Maltese. So, we are here to talk about what happened and what we will be doing going forward to ensure that the citizens, both human and dogs, are safe in the town of Halifax. So, um, Noreen, I don't know if you wanna do...
Well, we got it secondhand, we got it two days later. Basically, it was a... The dog owner from thirty-seven White Island Road was walking their dogs, the Maltese, small Malteses, when two German Shepherds from nineteen White Island Road left their property, circled the dog owners, ultimately grabbed the, the puppy, shook it, and, uh, it, it died from its injuries. After we, uh...
Thank you, very sad. Um, could I ask of the owners of the dogs? Hi, how are you? Do you have an electric fence?
Yes.
Okay, could you just talk to us a little bit about what happened and how the dogs got loose?
So, um, a friend of mine was actually coming over, Bo Dyer. He was coming over, and he had some bad back. So, I took Venus out to play with, both of the dogs, actually, out to play with him. I was playing football, and I was playing rough with him, you know what I mean? Because she's like a little bull in a china closet, everything she does is like her butt's on fire. So, I'm towing the ball, towing the ball, towing the ball. It was very sad. So, I tossed the ball real far, I tossed the ball real far, and I heard somebody screaming. I was like, what? She was on her leash, but she had a training leash on, too, so she has a steel cable leash and a training leash, because she's, like I say, she's like a bull in a china closet. Well, she comes again to the leash, and the leash broke.
Okay.
The leash broke, and all I heard was Kate. And I ran up top of the hill, and I saw Kate, and this young lady also over there, and it's just very, very sad. You know, like I say, it was just playing with the dogs.
So, the, so your property doesn't have a fence of any type?
No, we have, we have, uh, we have electric fence.
So, how did the dog, so he... Has the dog broken the electrical fence?
Nope, I had her on a leash.
So, you shut off the electrical fence? Okay, that's the part I missed.
Yeah. She didn't have that on.
The collar.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, now I changed it, and I got her on a training collar, with a steel leash. You know, I mean, just something to change, a cable leash, actually.
Right, so she wears the collar, and she, in the, in the electric fence is effective when she's wearing her collar?
Right, but this is, uh, now I've taken it off, and I actually got a, uh, training leash, the pull leash, the choke collar, if you might call it. But that trains them, so they don't go through the, again, the, you know, the end of the rope.
Okay.
I didn't know that before, the other rope, it's just like, in her chest collar, she runs as far as she wants. So, that's, that's what she had.
Okay, so how is the training going with you, with the dog?
Well, as of now, like I say, it was unfortunate, we just got him off, but we haven't taken, I think, while we're at, we got him on our leash. You know, that's the way we're gonna go on, we're gonna bring him.
So, when I read the report, it wasn't clear to me which dog had actually shaken the dog. I mean, it was Venus, so every, it was Venus, okay. So, Venus is how old?
Uh, now, she's, she's born on April thirteenth, so she's a year and...
So, she's about seventeen months?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Uh, the person who owned the Maltese? Hi, so sorry for the loss of your dog. Um, could you please explain to us, um, what happened on that day?
I was just walking both the dogs. We walked past the property and then got to, you have to say, ZU? I don't like to walk on fifty-eighth, so we got down to the end, and we turned around and we came back. Um, and the way down, they had hesitated, I didn't really notice, or notice anything, we just kept going. On the way back, um, as we were walking, I was sort of looking at both dogs, not really paying attention, but they hesitated again, and I looked over and I saw the two dogs sort of at the... It's hard to find with their backyard sort of downhill.
Okay.
I saw the two dogs, um, sort of on the back of the visible property, you can't really see below, and I stopped, I just was sort of, just sort of, I don't know, just looking. Um, and then they just sort of came at us. And I grabbed, um, the young one is so young, she was really, um, she'd just gotten all her shots, so I really hadn't walked to... This was only the second time she'd ever been for a walk. Um, I just grabbed the leashes, tried to swing them up out of the... I didn't think they were gonna come at us, but, um, the older dog kind of swung up, and I got her out of the way, and the dogs were coming, and I had the conscious thought not to bend down to where the dogs were, and it just happened. I, I, I can't say it, it was maybe ten seconds. Um, and then I realized that he had, um, the dog, my puppy, in her mouth. I reached down and took, like, grabbed the puppy out of her mouth. She was bleeding, I grabbed her. Michelle came up, and she picked up the older dog, and we just took up down the street. I couldn't even think, and, you know, then we picked her together and that, so...
I would imagine that, that's pretty awful. So, these dogs were clearly, like, I had a conversation with, um, Noreen this morning, and I said, well, you know, were they being aggressive, were they thinking that it was a toy? But I, I think it sounds like if they're circling, it's not playtime, it is.
No, they won't like that at all. I don't believe that, I... I don't think they knew what they were doing. I don't think they're aggressive dogs, and the reason why I don't think that is because I basically pried their, her, you know, pulled my dog out. If that was an aggressive dog, she would've gone after me. That's my feeling.
Did somebody get bit, though?
No. I got bit by my dog, because she was in shock.
Okay.
But that was the only bite.
Okay.
Have, have, uh, Noreen, have there been any incidents before with the, either set of dogs with problems of injury?
We have no previous history.
No previous history, no reports? And, I'm sorry, your name again?
What?
Yeah.
Kate.
Kate, did the dogs chase you down the street, or did you just immediately stop?
No, they just...
And how long have you had the dog?
She, we got her August, no, got her in August.
Oh, just this year?
No.
No, she's one year, a year ago.
A year ago. Uh, any type of training other than your own, that you said?
So, Thor has been trained by a trainer, and we've used the same techniques on Venus. Like I say, the only difference is, is Thor always had that slip collar.
Yeah.
And Venus, we just had a regular puppy collar on her, it's claw. So, it doesn't, you know, if you watch her go, everything was so fast, I was always afraid it hurt me. So, that's why I always had that on her, so it wouldn't, like, choke her, you know?
So, everybody's in agreement that, in fact, your dog did, in fact, cause injury to the dog for him to lose his, lose our life, or whatever it changed. So, there's no question in that. Alright, thank you.
Uh, my, all my questions have pretty much been answered. I was, my first question was gonna be, what was the restraint, uh, of the dog? Has the dog been aggressive prior? It doesn't appear that way. It just appears to be an unfortunate circumstance. The dog may have been a little riled up from the play, which is my thinking. Doesn't fix anything, but at least it creates a reason what happened there. There's nothing that's gonna fix this thing exactly. Does, does our dog officer have any recommendations? Have you seen the animals?
I, I would suggest training in... I, I don't trust the electric fences, I just don't.
I've seen motivated dogs will go right through the fence. They won't come back onto the property.
They won't come back to it, yeah. And once they're off the property, they're not coming back.
Do you have a comment?
Sue, we are planning on installing a new fence.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, do anything.
Thank you.
They're not aggressive dogs.
Kate, are you, are you satisfied with, with, because you've got to walk your dog up down the block? You still have one dog, I'm assuming. Are you satisfied that the actions they're taking is gonna make it safe for you and your animals?
I, I do, um, and I also, uh, I, I don't believe that anything's gonna make up for this, so there's nothing, I, I don't want anything to happen to the dog. I think that they've been incredibly responsible. They've, uh, they took care of the medical expenses of my other dog.
Awesome.
They made restitution on the dog that I lost. I, I know that they're heartbroken for me, and I'm heartbroken for them. I just, I think it would be nice if we could just pass this.
That's really...
Well, that's where I'm inclined to go with this, really based on you, uh, that you feel satisfied that this isn't likely to happen again, you're not threatened. Um, that's important. Uh, it doesn't appear that the dog has any history here. I, I, again, I'm kind of in the mode of making my judgment based on...
My motion would be that we allow the process that is in place right now, as far as putting a permanent fence up.
Training.
Training.
Licensing.
Pardon me?
License.
Oh, oh, the dogs aren't licensed?
No, they are now, but to maintain...
Yeah, to maintain the access.
All times.
Okay. That's very important.
Anything I have to say?
I know, and thank you so much for, you know, handling it all the way that you did.
And Susan, next to her neighbor, also.
Yeah, I'm Ray Nordgren, I'm their direct neighbor to them, and I'm seventy. And their dogs, if anything, are overly playful, I mean. And I respect to me, they put Venus on that leash, because they were afraid to knock me over. But never was aggressive, always super playful. And they never presented, and it's an unfortunate thing that the adult dogs...
Yeah, very sad.
...would happen.
Very sad.
But, uh, as their direct neighbor, I've never felt threatening or anything other than they were, like, crazy playful. And never showed, uh, a vicious streak or an aggressive streak. They run over, you know, when their gene's outside, they wanna play, and, you know, never, never show any signs of aggression. And I just wanted to know, you know, how I felt as their neighbor, and I have a little Shih Tzu, too, in my house, so I respect what they're doing with the fence and controlling the dogs.
Thank you, thank you for your...
Well, most of the time when I have dog hearings, I always call them people hearings, because the people are responsible for taking care of the animals and doing the right thing. Unfortunately, then the animals pay for the price, other than the galactic inability the person to work with. In this particular case, I don't see that.
No.
Uh, I, I see it as a unfortunate...
Series of events.
Yeah. And sorry that it occurred, because I, I love, I used to breed shepherds, so I appreciate what you're doing.
So, we have a, a motion that we ensure that the fence goes up and that there's proper training, and that the dogs are, remain licensed. And I have a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming again, so, again, so sorry for your loss, really. Thank you, thank you so much. Good luck. Okay. Thank you, Noreen. Thank you, Brian. Nice to see you. Okay, so, we actually... How are you?
How are you?
Oh, that's good.
Timing is everything, yes.
Yeah, yeah, really. Oh, my gosh.
This is Mr. Carmen, and this is Claudia. Claudia is applying to be on the Wage and Personnel, and, um, Mr. Carmen is our moderator. So, we, I didn't realize, um, that you were coming, so I, we started a little bit early to interview. Claudia had come to a Wage and Personnel Board, which at this point I'm serving on. And, um, she sat through the meeting, and she is very interested, she works for JP Morgan, and, um...
I saw her, that background information that Charlie sent me, so...
Yeah, so I don't know if you have any questions for us, or if you have any questions for Claudia?
No, I, I'm ecstatic about more interest in, in committees and with the background that I see, I'm very excited about what you can bring, uh, and some relief on some levels. I mean, with the only vacancies, I, I think our town meetings, our special town meetings get a lot easier to manage if we got a lot of the work done ahead of time. So, I'm ecstatic about your interest. And so, I would be very supportive.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we're really excited, and really, thank you so much, because we know that people are so busy in their lives, so we really, truly appreciate you being willing to come on, so... Do you have any questions, or...
Not right now, no, I don't.
Okay, so we'll see you Thursday?
Yes.
This is a lifetime appointment, by the way. You were told that, right, just, just checking.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we appoint Claudia Noble Cotton to, um, the Wage and Personnel Board for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
So, we need a vote of the Finance Committee... Oh, I'm sorry, Maureen, did you have any questions? No, vote, vote? Yes, yes. Congratulations, you can be sworn in with the town clerk anytime before Thursday. And if you don't come in before Thursday, you can still come to the meeting, you just can't participate in a vote. And I don't suspect we'll be making any kinds of votes on Thursday, because on Thursday, we're just interviewing for the, um... Yes, yes, so it's at five o'clock this week. It's not typically at that time, but now that you're on, they can talk about different dates and times that might work best for you.
Yes.
Okay. And Diane? Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. You have a volunteer.
Okay. Boy, that dog hearing went as good, as, as good as it could, right?
Yeah.
Oh, hi, you're still here?
Yeah.
Oh, that's awesome.
You should be my new boss.
Yeah, you should, yeah, that's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Why all the good-looking people are here?
Well, they're here for the big, the big discussion. Alright, let me just, um, I'm playing the role of Charlie Seelig at the same time. How do I look?
How you like me so far, is that what you said?
You're rolling over here. Okay, so, um, we received a total of twenty-eight applicants, yeah. So, um, as we talked about at the last meeting, I was gonna, um, kind of go through them and work with badge quests a little bit. I had to separate, some, there were people that applied that didn't make the requirement, whether they didn't have the correct supervisory requirement, or whether or not they had, um, not met the education requirement or whatever other requirement that we had. So, we sort of separated them, and then, um, did some Googling and Facebooking, and a little bit of background. And we came up, we need, um, five candidates that are gonna go to the center, and we need at least two alternates, so that, um, if for some reason one of the five that we chose to go to the assessment decides they're not interested,[1754.14] we have somebody else to put in their place. So we don't necessarily have to have five. We'd like to have five. So in your packets, I know that you guys have been looking at them as well and receiving feedback. So I don't know if you wanna go through and, we can't discuss numbers right now. Oh, I mean, not names. We can only talk about numbers. And the process so that everybody understands, once we come up with the seven people or eight people, then tomorrow we will make phone calls to those people, asking them to be part of the assessment. And once they accept, then we can make their name public. But until then, we have to just talk numbers. So we've never really done it this way before, so this is kinda new. So, anyway.
This was actually a lot of work, trying to get through all these applications. I mean, some of them were, to Kim's point, didn't quite meet the requirements of the, of the process, but came up with a list. Especially after getting some feedback.
So we have, so I'll just start throwing out numbers. So there are three that stand out to me. There's actually four that really stand out to me, but one of my favorites would be number seven. A person is a sergeant, has been a sergeant for ten years, has their master's degree, has attended the FBI academy, had a good letter, had a great package, has done a lot of administrative stuff, has also, has a lot of experience on, you know, those teams, those special teams. So that, that's number seven. Did everybody get numbers, number seven?
Yep.
Okay. The next candidate is number eleven. That particular candidate has been a lieutenant, again, for ten years. They have their master's degree. They received many, many accreditations. Administration background, bilingual, has a lot of emergency response. And the other thing that we were looking at, well, I was looking sort of at is like emergency management stuff because that person will, will, will be responsive during storms. And the next person is number.
Twenty-four?
Number six, number, yeah, twenty-four. So number twenty-four is a sergeant for the last six years. They have their bachelor's degree. That person is, I think they're working on their masters, but it's a requirement.
Masters in public administration?
Yes, yes. Which is, that's a good masters to have because of grant writing and administration. But this particular work person has worked for the same community and has sort of made their way up from patrol officer to school resource officer, detective evidence officer and sergeant. And has a lot of accommodations for the work that they've done and a lot of like detective training. Candidate number sixteen is a lieutenant and has been a lieutenant for the last thirteen years. They have their bachelor's degree. They were in the military, serving as a colonel for the military police. So that's pretty impressive.
Sounds like he's got thirty years' experience.
Yeah, yeah. Also, besides the military army reserve experience, has worked in his community, I mean, has worked as a police officer, has been a detective court case manager and a sergeant and is currently a lieutenant and has been a lieutenant for ten years. I mean, I'm sorry, thirteen, fourteen years.
Fourteen.
Thirteen years, yeah. They have a master's degree, again, not required, but. Candidate number twenty-two has been a lieutenant since nineteen ninety-eight. They have their bachelor's degree. This person has had steady employment. Has a lot of certificates. Let me see what stood out at this one. I don't know if this one was a proper, there was one of them. Oh, no, that's the next one. The next one is number one. They have been a sergeant and accreditation manager, which is kind of a new position. And that person is more of sort of an administrative accreditation manager. I don't know if you've heard that term. But they do a lot of administration for a department. So it's like a administrative sergeant. That person has been a supervisor since two thousand and four. They have their master's degree. And I believe.
She's got twenty-six years' experience.
And they, they are also a military officer, so not a colonel, of course, but a lot of certificates.
It's hardly going to any more detail without actually identifying.
I know. And the last person, and again, the, this is somebody who is a lieutenant since nineteen ninety-seven. They have their master's degree and meets all of the requirements it was in the military. So I don't know if anybody has anybody else or feels strongly about one number over the other.
I, I, not necessarily in any order, the first five. I mean, they're in order, but.
I review the others as well. It is unfortunate that some of them didn't meet. I'd much rather do a, do a face-to-face interview than I do resumes. I don't particularly like resumes. But based on the information and requirements that we put out, the ones that we have here fit closely to what we're, at least the requirements are. I'm not saying that they're maybe the individual we want.
I think that we have, I think we have fi, if the first, I think we have at least five great options. You know, that on paper look like they could be a good fit for here. And again, the whole thing about the assessment is really honing in on if they're a better fit for our community. And then we go, we do the interview, obviously. So it's really hard, again, as they just stated, like on paper, it's hard to assess, but you need to kinda look at, you know, where they've been, how, you know, that they haven't moved around a ton, that there's consistency, that there's accreditations, that there's enough consistency within their, and they make, they write a nice letter or they have. Yeah, 'cause some of them didn't really write great letters. But, did you have a question?
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
I know you can't give the names, but could you give the city of towns?
I don't think we can.
No, that's too close.
Any states?
Uh, not in this.
No, not in this particular group, not in this group.
Yeah, we have to keep it. We thought we were gonna be able to do that and then we found out that we can only do numbers. Oh, hi, Mike, I didn't see you come in. How was you?
Well, you came behind Norrie, she's not gonna protect you.
What do you want? What do you want, a mission?
Well, after tomorrow, if in fact we meet you.
Yeah, so once we make the phone calls tomorrow and people accept, oh, did you come in and hear that part? Were you here?
Just Ray, when you were just going through some of the numbers.
Oh, okay, all right. So this is the way that it's gonna work. So we come up with seven. Five that we've identified that we wanna go into the assessment. And then once we make phone calls tomorrow and they accept the assessment, then we can discuss their name.
Or decline.
Or, yes. So if they decline, then we go to the alternates.
All right, Scott.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
So I think the proposal would be, oh, Tori, I'm sorry, we interrupted you. Do you have something?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to the interview process and hope to find somebody that's a fit. You know, but I, I do better when I'm on face-to-face with a person.
I, I totally agree with that. Paper's one thing. Physically interacting with somebody, you get a totally different feel for.
And we're a unique community. We're a small community, but I would say we're small but mighty. But we want somebody that is gonna wanna be here. We don't want somebody who's just here so that they are ready.
Put something else on the resume.
To retire and, or to just, we want somebody that is, is motivated, is excited to be part of the community and, you know.
Put some time.
And has the right temperament, has the right temperament. You know, we don't, yeah, you have a, what do you want?
October sixth, is that something the Republican go to?
I, I don't know. I was asked that earlier. I meant to ask the consultant when I was on the phone with them. All I know is that we, sometimes we have gone in for when we've done the fire one in the morning and just kind of introduced ourselves and had them do introductions. I was told by Charlie and the consultant, Mr. Palmer, I didn't say anything different, but that he would prefer for us to go in at the lunchtime, just introduce ourselves.
Is that the actual assessment is gonna be the sixth?
Yeah, but I don't think that it's open to the, like, I don't think you could come and watch it. Yeah, I don't think we can even really do that.
They didn't do it before when we got here.
When we do the intro for us, that's.
Yeah, when we do the interviews, certainly, but the assessment. And then we get reports from the assessment and we really like, with the consultant, like, we look at every part of the assessment and the different, oh, my gosh, I'm so tired. I can't even breathe. The different, not activities. Bert, help me out. The different.
Scenarios.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Bert.
For the interviews, we can be there?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, those interviews are public. Absolutely be here.
And those will probably be after the.
Yeah, so what I would imagine.
After, so we try to narrow it down so that we didn't hopefully the best candidates based on our opinion and the assessment. Because even though they may assess certain people, we may not feel that that's the individual we want.
So the hope is on the sixth that, you know, they go through the assessment. It takes maybe a few days for them to kinda put it together. I think, I think within a week they should be able to have all of the work done.
So from the five and plus the two alternates, after the assessment, what do you hope to narrow it down to? Three bests, top two?
I don't think that.
Or is it just gonna be the, the chief from the, from the five and two?
No, can I answer?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, all right. So I think we're gonna leave it up to the assessment. Because if, like, we have two people that don't do well in the assessment and it's clear that they would not be a good fit here, then we wouldn't interview them. But if there are three candidates or how, if there are five candidates that come back and say, these are all great candidates. These are ranking, but there's great things about each of them, then we can interview all five of them. But I think until we know how they do in the assessment, it'll be difficult to determine how, have that expectation of I want three or I want two or.
And believe me, you know, I haven't been on the police and take it very serious, whoever we bring in here, 'cause it's gotta be somebody that, that definitely fits.
Is it the hopes to get someone in place before Chief Project retires on that thirty-first date?
That's why we kinda pushed it along a little bit to give somebody an opportunity to give their notice.
Yeah, so we've been sort of on schedule in order to make that happen. And it appeared on the application that everybody would be available for that date. Yeah. So that's good. So we hope to be able to have that in place. So hopefully, I'll get in touch with the consultant tomorrow and just verify like the, how much time. So, you know, 'cause we can meet, we don't have to do it on a selectmen's night. So like, if they're ready on, you know, for instance, August, like eleventh, everything's done and, you know, we can meet. We'll set up interviews before whatever the next selectmen, yeah.
Do you do meet in October?
Oh, did I say August?
Are you talking next August? It's okay.
Been a long day.
In case anyone was listening at home.
I'm sorry, I meant October.
So is the assessment, we're doing the background checks or is that done after?
It's funny, yeah. No, that's, I'm glad that you brought that up. It's funny that you would bring that up because I was thinking of that earlier. Because I was trying to remember what we did with the fire chief, but we had, we did the background check. So that, I don't know. Like, I don't, I don't know who.
I prefer us do the background checks because then we can form.
I don't think that that would be, I think that would, I think that, I wonder.
Background checks wouldn't, it could be completed by an August date.
No.
My goodness.
No.
Unless you worked twelve hours a day.
Well, we got experts.
Or an October date.
I got, you caught it from me, right?
What's that?
You said August, 'cause you caught it from me. Yes, yes. That'd be, we'd have to go back in time.
Oh, no, I thought you said August.
No, I, no, I made the mistake of saying August. Anyway, so yeah, that's a challenge and, and that's something that, like, I know the sheriff's department sometimes has done them for us in the past. You know, that's something we'll have to come up with. 'Cause honestly, like, we haven't done this in so long, right? Like, 'cause the last time we went out, we stayed in-house. We got to the application process and then we opted to go with the chief and not follow through with the assessment.
I mean, it's open duty, but I don't know how professional it would be in-house.
Yeah.
Doing background checks on.
Well, it'd be professional, but it'd be intrusive.
So we'll, yeah, so we'll, we'll figure that out. Yeah, thank you, Bert, because I'm glad you brought that up.
Sheriff's department's done them before in the past.
Yeah, yeah. So we can, yeah. So maybe I should make a phone call. Bert, would you suggest, 'cause you work for the sheriff's department, that we make, I make a phone call tomorrow and hiring?
I would suggest either calling Superintendent Moscato.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm, sorry.
The sheriff.
That guy?
I tried to call the sheriff today, couldn't find a direct number to him.
I forgot, I forgot. Yeah, 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 yeah. Would you mind? No, with, I forgot his proper term.
His proper what?
Miss, Moscato. I forgot his proper.
Jim, Jim Moscato.
No, 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 but.
His type, his type.
Yeah, I called the sheriff, I, you know, my suggestion would be to call him directly.
Really?
Well, the special sheriff, I'm too.
Okay.
Well, he's gonna pass it down to Moscato anyway, whether he wants to do it or not, because he'll have to do it.
The superintendent field services, Moscato usually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's very nice.
He will.
Yeah. Is Nikki still in?
Really?
Oh, oh, you don't, oh, oh, I thought he was very nice.
No, he's a very nice man. He's, he's done plenty in the past.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, so, all right. Okay, thank you again for bringing that up. Anybody else have anything?
I did this one before.
Would you mind? Does anybody else have any questions or wanna know?
Anything we can tell you?
Official channel tomorrow with those names, is that gonna just be posted anywhere or would you get one of us to reach out to the board?
Assuming we get to everybody.
Just no touching.
Do a group call. Yeah.
Yeah, you can reach out, just don't do, don't be doing too much touching.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming in, gentlemen.
Oh, we have to vote on the, the numbers.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have to vote any numbers.
Jeez, we haven't even finished.
Is it by the number or for the numbers?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion of the order, yeah. Not in, not in any specific order.
Just these.
We accept the lowest expressed interest.
So that candidate number seven, eleven, twenty-four, sixteen, twenty-two.
Alternates.
With the alternates being number one and number fifteen. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your, thank you. Do you wanna text me his contact? Oh!
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, not on camera.
Oh, you're ready, 'cause you don't wanna, you know, you could be on camera.
I was referring to the open wallet.
You guys have a number?
Some move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, so you know what you can do? Can I show you the easy way of doing it?
Yeah, we got someone to.
Oh, yes, hi, Scott. Sorry, I'm a giant.
Why did you rough, why was one oh five roughed up? You don't even have any doubt why they roughed up one oh five?
He has nothing.
That was asked, I know, I know he doesn't have anything to do with it. But that's a question I came in. Why the road all roughed up? I'm sorry, what are you talking about?
It's the same process they used up on Oak Street, which is the process we usually use.
Yeah, but people said the rocks were flying.
So you don't wanna give me a sound.
One person got their windshield tapped.
I didn't write down.
I wasn't aware of that.
We'll see later.
Thank you.
Thanks for the warning.
Hi Scott, come on down.
Pick me, Marty, pick me.
Do you need me to sign it? I did sign it, I signed three different places.
The hallway floor?
Oh, right, I think I remember it was like a single page.
Say five bucks a square foot?
Oh, I'm so glad you were here to talk about it, 'cause I was wondering what the heck.
What are we doing? What do you wanna do?
Well, what we came up with is a crisis from three different companies and this company, this product is a thirty-year warranty.
Is that similar to what's down at the town bar?
Similar to, to that, but it's got a, that's only a ten-year warranty, you can't wax it, you can't do anything.
Right.
Or you have a warranty, this, you can do whatever you want to it. And it's got a thirty-year commercial warranty.
What about leveling the floor and that kind of stuff?
They get into all that as well.
I love it.
Especially the transition by the other door there, 'cause that was...
They can do that.
What's the slippage factor if it gets wet?
It'll get a little slippery, but we're gonna have runners down the centers and...
Okay, that's nice.
That's a heavy product. It's glued down.
Is that the color you guys chose?
Yes, it comes in like a low, medium and high and that's, that's the heavy duty one.
It's the high.
Thickness is, I believe, is that what it's called?
Yeah, the only thing I would be concerned would be the slippage and change.
Well, it's gonna get a little rich to it. But can I ask you, is that the color you chose?
Yes.
What color was it?
I think it's gonna hide the most, you know, between the salt and the dust.
And then the runners are black.
Right.
Runners would be dark colored.
Yeah. Yeah, awesome.
Let's get her done.
So what's the ETA?
Kind of against the grain, 'cause traditionally it's in carpet.
Do we have money?
Well, I'd like to see it all transitioned as we go forward in the future.
That's very important.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense to have carpeting in the hall.
At least, first of all.
Yeah, where all the really heavy wet traffic is.
Yep, so then that kind of begs an expression.
We'll figure.
We just stop where it's been damaged or we continue the other hallway?
Oh, I think we do the other hallway, right?
I think we do too, because if we don't, and then next year we go to do it, oh, there's no that color anymore.
And at some point, you want it to be upstairs, right?
Or it just looks different.
Or it just, if it discolorizes something, that's one thing we're concerned with.
Yeah.
Have you gotten cost estimates?
I do, yeah.
This could not even take a wax and everything if you wanted to do it. I didn't know you could even do that.
Yeah, we're at the school, they put three coats of wax on it.
Well, this is the...
And that seals the seam, so this can be sanitized.
Yeah, well, that's exactly the point, so we don't have a similar issue.
Can I take a picture of that, do you mind? Just because somebody was asking.
We do the carpeting and then if the same thing happens again, we start over again.
Somebody was asking me about this, 'cause they loved it.
I'd like to see this done and eventually I'd like to see the steps out and was back there with the same rubber product that we have on the other stairs down at the end of the hallway.
Yeah, step like that, just patterned to it.
'Cause they get really massacred, like holidays and house facts with...
Is it right there?
Yes, let's go ahead and go.
So what's the downtime that's gonna take for the offices closed, you're gonna do it on a weekend?
Do it on a weekend.
Weekend, right.
No, wouldn't affect office hours at all.
Okay, so what's the skinny on the money?
So to do, to do what's been damaged and ripped out, including the elevator area, is fifty-six hundred dollars.
And then how about do the rest?
Material and labor.
How about the whole thing?
And the second hallway, the collector's office, thirty-seven hundred dollars.
So, that's gonna be ten thousand dollars.
Yep, so I, you know, I asked finance for eleven dollars and just...
Oh, you did, already?
Yeah.
Okay.
They couldn't vote last night because they were missing a member, so...
But the inclination was there, right?
Sounded pretty good, yeah.
Could I ask you, Scott, that as part of the capital plan, does it make sense to do the upstairs for next year? So that you have everything that matches or does it matter?
I would, yeah, now that we started the process with the first floor, that's, I'm going after the rest of it, for sure.
Yeah, because if you did it for this year's capital...
Does that include the front hallway? No.
It stops at the double doors. I didn't go, I didn't go outside. We, I can ask them to add that, it doesn't seem like it'd be a whole lot of money.
Yeah.
You know how it is, the edges of the work, the feel is...
Right, but the feel's nothing, right, exactly.
So I, again, expect to be a little...
I'd be inclined to go right up, I'd be inclined to go right up to the stairs and get the front hallway then too.
Right. Again, it's not a lot of square footage.
Yeah.
Well, if you're gonna do upstairs too, you might as well do it all the way out the door so it's all the same going all the way around.
When we do upstairs, we do upstairs, of course, then we just get the length. It just keeps on going, boys and girls.
But if we go all the floor and on this level, all the way from stem to stem.
Yeah, and then next time around, we can budget for the little bit that's at the top of the stairs. And like I said, even the stairway, I'd like to see in that road.
Okay, so I'll bump it up a little bit, make an estimate and ask finance to...
Well, we don't have to do all that now, but at least, at least the hallway, I think we should do the whole.
That's what I thought.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Oh, to beyond the double doors on the first floor?
Yeah, yeah.
So you know, probably on the first floor, except in the office.
Right.
So, just to ask you, as far as budget goes, it, which budget, where is it coming out?
It would come out of the reserve.
Have you spoken to Sandy here, the accountant?
Reserve account.
So it'll come out of the reserve account, unexpected. So it won't touch your regular budget and so he already went to finance, which is great. So they, they're supporting it, they just didn't have that last member to help with the vote, right?
I didn't know, yeah, so I didn't...
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then what we can do is, as we plan for the capital plan for March, we'll add the upstairs so that we have it all matching. Does it matter though?
Would seem to make sense.
Okay.
That and the kitchen, right?
Yeah, the kitchen area in particular, 'cause that with the food and, and, you know, this event.
It's a lot easier to clean up.
And now, does it cost about two and a half?
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree that that should be included.
Yeah. Yeah, awesome.
Everything on the foot, reboot.
And that, I think...
Scott did a lot of research too, when he presented to the board, he had looked at several areas, did a fine job on getting the right price, the right product and everything was, I feel it was very well researched.
Scott, you really must have done a good job, you got him in your car.
Yeah, yeah, what's going on?
No, he did, really, awesome. No, you've been really, we've been so lucky to have you, thank you so much for all of it. You really always go above and beyond and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'm having a pig roast, next weekend, I was wondering if I could have one of those steers.
Sure, come on up.
Why do we have you as a captive audience? Did the engineer show up for the ramp out there? I never heard, to take a look at it?
I was told to not have the engineer come, 'cause Charlie had an assessment coming for all the buildings.
Okay.
So kind of put that on hold.
All right.
Although the money's already been put there.
What is it, what you talked about, what?
The ramp.
Oh, the ramp.
I guess is, assessment coming to all the, all the municipal buildings?
Oh, 'cause he was gonna apply for the grant.
Okay, okay.
So kind of put it on the back burner until...
Okay, I was wondering if he showed up anyway, just to get some feedback as to the...
We'd spoken to also at our last meeting, maybe some cosmetic repairs on it, if, depending on how long.
If it had to wait, yeah.
It's not like that being proactive.
Okay, so that were really, you know, we secured it, yeah.
Well, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Because, because we, we had an incident in the hallway, an incident in the hallway because somebody rolled a rug up and some lady didn't notice it, almost tripped and hurt herself on the rug and stopped to know.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I, I rolled it back out, just so you know.
Happens from time to time during windstorms, in particular when the doors are open, the rug gets, even though it's fairly heavy out there, but still.
Thank you for your...
Excellent, thank you, Scott, nice job.
Thank you again.
Anything on the agenda that needs to be public consumption?
Okay, so Charlie needs the board to approve the spending time, money on the breakfast and lunch for the assessment centers.
How much?
I don't know.
It's only, it's, it's under a hundred dollars.
Yeah, breakfast's gonna be coffee and pastries and then at lunch...
Lunch or sandwiches.
What is this for?
For the assessment center. We have to approve, the accountant has us...
They can't bring paper bagged lunch, brown bagged?
We can buy in brown bag.
Yeah.
I did with brown bag, you put the lunch in.
So we have to make an, we have to have...
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
Do we have a reporter in the house? Can I say anything I wanna say?
Then hold on, I need this a little bit more. Now, so it would be helpful if the board shows a date for final interviews. We need to set aside...
Yeah, well, it would be nice to do that, but we have to talk to...
About the assessment.
Yeah.
Background checks.
So I'll call, I'll call...
Can't find me in Charlie.
Okay, no, no, I'll, I'll, I'll call him, I'll call him.
We could say two weeks after the assessment, but then it's certainly gonna happen two weeks after the assessment because the background checks, the queries, all that stuff's gonna come through.
Yeah, it would be nice to actually have the background checks before the assessment.
Yeah.
'Cause that hopefully would narrow it down even more.
Well, we won't have the background checks before the sixth, I don't think, but we, we could try.
Yeah, I, only because if there's some, something, all that pops up.
I didn't think about that until this one.
Well, we can all come in one day, get on the phone and make some phone calls.
Well, we're rushing the process now, 'cause we weren't sure what the...
Well, like, yeah.
The chief was doing.
The exact date, yeah. Okay.
Anything else that can... Okay, good.
I would move that there, Jerry.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.